Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Commissioners' Court. Today is Tuesday, May the 10th, 2022. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1,200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very fortunate today to have Reverend Terry Louven here that's going to give us the invocation. He's with the 501(c)(3) charity organization, All Things New. Reverend Louven, please stand.
Please pray with me. Heavenly gracious Father, Lord, we call upon you and pray, Lord, that you hear our voices this morning in prayer. Lord, we pray for your presence. We pray for your hand upon us, on us, in our lives. We pray, Lord, for your safety and for your protection. Lord, we pray for all in assembly here, for our emergency medical technicians, emergency medical response people, especially for our law enforcement, men and women, Lord, keep them safe as they go about keeping us safe. Lord, for the men behind the bench, Lord, we pray for them this morning, as we pray for everyone this morning, inasmuch as, Lord, whenever we are standing before you, Lord, and we give an accounting of our life, that we hear the words, "Well done, good and faithful servant." Lord, be with this session this morning. Guard our minds, our thoughts, and our actions, the things that we say and the things that we do. Let everything glorify you. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
We have a big event coming up this Friday and Saturday in Hood County, and we have the wonderful Mike McMahon here, and he's going to say a few words to us, please.
I fooled you, too. Have you ever heard a pastor say just a few words? I want to remind everyone of the crusade that's coming up this weekend. Hope, now 22, takes place the 13th and 14th, which is this weekend. It'll be at the high school football stadium. They've got two or three cowboy, or professional football players. The main speaker, I've forgotten his first name, last name is Evans, is Tony Evans' son. If you haven't heard him, you have missed something. That guy is on fire. He's great. Then they have Michael Vick, who was a professional football player. He had a stumble, spent some time. While he was in, he found about, he found out Jesus was really there and really loved him. So I encourage you to come. It's going to be a super time, and the results are going to be supernatural. Amen.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much, Pastor McMahon. We, no presentations and no awards today, is that correct? Okay, I want to remind everybody that today is the first Commissioners' Court, and as such, we have open mic or citizens' comments at large. And I have, you have to fill out a public participation form in order to speak, and I have presently four, is that right? Okay, four, and then one public participation form to speak on an agenda item. So if you want to address the court, you must fill out a public participation form, and the forms are back there with Sheriff Deed. He'll give you a form, you can fill it out, and then he will take it and give it to Katie Lang, number it, and then you will be allowed to speak at the agenda item. I want to, at this point, before we get to that point, to remind everybody that there are also rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the Hood County Commissioners' Court, also back there with Sheriff Deeds. And in those rules, which had been adopted by this court in February of 2021, it addresses how the business should be conducted of the county. And I want to just read a couple of sections here that I think are very pertinent, especially in view of what happened at the last Commissioners' Court hearing. Under E, it says, "It is the intention of the Commissioners' Court to provide an open access to the citizens of Hood County to address the Commissioners' Court and express themselves on issues of county government. Members of the public are reminded that the Hood County Commissioners' Court is a constitutional court with both judicial and legislative powers created under Article 5, Section 1 and Section 18 of the Texas Constitution. As a constitutional court, the Hood County Commissioners' Court also possesses the power to issue a contempt of court citation under Section 81.024 of the Texas Local Government Code. Accordingly, members of the public in attendance at any regular, special, and/or emergency meeting of the court shall conduct themselves with proper respect and decorum in speaking to and/or addressing the court, in participating in public discussions before the court, and in all actions in the presence of the court. Proper attire for men, women, and children is mandatory. Those members of the public who are inappropriately attired and/or who do not conduct themselves in an orderly and appropriate manner will be ordered to leave the meeting. Refusal to abide by the court's order and/or continued disruption of the meeting may result in a contempt of court citation. F, it is not the intention of the Hood County Commissioners' Court to provide a public forum for the demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the court to allow a member or members of the public to insult the honesty and/or integrity of the court as a body or any member or members of the court, individually or collectively. Accordingly, profane insulting or threatening language directly toward the court and/or any person in the court's presence and/or racial, ethnic, or gender slurs or epithets will not be tolerated. These rules do not prohibit public criticism of the Commissioners' Court, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. Violation of these rules may result in the following sanctions: cancellation of a speaker's remaining time, removal from the Commissioners' Court, contempt citation, and/or such other civil and/or criminal sanctions as may be authorized under the Constitution, statutes, and codes of the state of Texas. These are the rules that were adopted by all members of this present setting Commissioners' Court on the ninth day of February 2021 and is signed by everybody on this court. I know that all of us should want what is in the best interest of Hood County. That's what we're here for, to hopefully help us build a better Hood County. So if you've got any suggestions or comments that want to make Hood County a better place, we certainly do welcome those comments. But if you're here to just disrupt and cause a ruckus, I'm sorry, we've got the sheriff here, we've got bailiffs here, we've got constables here today, and that's just not to be tolerated. And I really would ask for everybody's consideration, for your neighbors, for yourself, and let's conduct ourselves properly and just conduct the business, like Reverend Louven said in his message to us, his invocation this morning. Let's all try to get along a little bit better and try to move forward on the best interest of the community. So with that, the first thing that we have at order here is the consent agenda. Is there any Commissioner which should pull anything off the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a proper motion?
Just a question. Six citizens' comments.
Excuse me, I got world up in myself.
That's okay.
I got the citizens' comments and the first person to speak on the citizen comment, and each person will be allowed five minutes, a maximum of five minutes. And the first person to sign up was David Todd Erberg.
Good morning, Commissioners' Court. I have a couple of questions about the Big L Fire. Any of you can answer them. My first question is, was there a mandatory evacuation order for parts of Hood County, including the town of Lipan? Yes?
We can't respond.
Huh? You can't respond?
That's not the, they said that we cannot respond. This is for you to state whatever's on your mind, but we cannot engage in any discussions with you, and I'm sorry about that.
Stop my clock then, give me my 30 seconds back. I'll answer it. Yes, there was. Who issued that order? I'm guessing it was emergency management, which I'm guessing the authority by the judge. Did everyone follow the mandatory evacuation? I'm told no. There was a lot of people who stayed, especially in the city, in the town of Lipan. My question then was, did everyone leave the town of Lipan? No. Was anyone arrested for violating that? I'm going to say no. I know the answer to that as well. Why weren't they? And I'm guessing because these people were trying to protect their properties and their businesses and their livelihoods. So my next question was, was the newly purchased mobile command unit used in this emergency response? I'm told no, it was not. My question then is, does it even start? And I did see it, I think, unless it's the old one, so it probably does start, but I have a question about why we buy this mobile command unit, which is an antique for emergencies such as the Big L Fire, yet we didn't even get it started? Can you think of another emergency that would trump this one, or maybe we could use it for? Because I think this is pretty one, one of those big emergencies that the mobile command unit would have been used for. I mean, I'm no expert on emergencies. Oh, yeah, right, I am an expert on emergency responses. I've been doing it for 25 years. And a mobile command unit would have been perfect, in this case, to deliver water, food, place for the firefighters to go, cool down, and yet no one in this whole county thought to start this thing up and bring it down there? Wow. So in summary, a mandatory evacuation order was issued, just like your mandates. No one followed it. No one was arrested for violating the said order because they were trying to save their livelihoods. The money that was obtained by our court by selling our freedoms and rights away during COVID was used to purchase an antique mobile command unit for emergencies, and it wasn't even thought, or thought to be used as a mobile command unit in an emergency. You guys do understand this is nothing more than running a business, right? And you are held accountable to the stockholders, in this case, the citizens of Hood County. There are two things we can take away from the last two years. In this county, if this county was run like a business, like it should, I would be asking the question, which category do the decisions made in the last two years fall into? There are only three: ignorance, which is forgivable, incompetence, which is not, and stupidity, which is not. I'm going to throw ignorance out. Now, I'm a man, and I'm a real man, so I'm one that can admit when I'm wrong, and I will admit that I have been wrong. I have been accusing you, Mr. Massengill, of being a tyrant and a bully, and that was wrong, and I'm going to apologize to you. I know you don't know what that is, probably came to spell the word apology because I've never witnessed you ever apologize for anything. So what that means is when you're wrong, you say you're sorry. So I'm sorry. You are not a tyrant or a bully, because those two terms indicate that you control people through fear, make them abide by your orders, or succumb to you. And as I've just showed, no one actually does what you want. I didn't listen to you when I opened my business against your orders. As did many follow suit, the whole city of Lipan didn't listen to you or follow your orders during the Big L Fire. They blatantly ignored you and fought for their livelihoods, just like we did during COVID. Heck, even when you penned a more generous letter for your buddy, who was in cahoots with you to try to prosecute me and not obey, by not obeying you to get him appointed a district judge, even the governor of Texas didn't listen to you. So no, sorry, sir, but you are no tyrant or bully. The other thing you're not is a leader. I have you figured out, and I believe most people in this county have as well. I live by a couple phrases. This is one of the most important. It's only six words, and I believe Christ almighty lived by the same statement: Do right and fear no man. You, sir, are exact opposite of that phrase, as you are disrespectful to others, demeaning, self-aggrandizing, and you're disgrace to the people you serve, and you are coward who would not stand up for your oath and protect the citizens you serve. For that, too, sir, you should be fired.
The next speaker, Van Vernon.
Judge, Commissioners, I have a petition, just like was turned in about three, four meetings ago. And Judge, I'm sorry.
Can you raise the mic up, please?
Judge, I'm sorry, it's against you. I fought for you when we were running the first time, and I have been disappointed. We, the undersigned qualified voters of Hood County, Texas pursuant to Article 5, Section 24 of the Texas Constitution, petition the Commissioners' Court of Hood County to fairly and without bias investigate to the full extent the Hood County Judge, Mr. Ron Massengill, for offenses against the public administration under Texas Penal Code, Chapter 39, namely abuse of office. We request the above-mentioned Commissioners' Court to direct the District Attorney, Mr. Ryan Sinclair, or County Attorney, Mr. Matt Mills, to oversee and process the investigation through the Hood County 355th District Court, the Honorable Judge Brian Buffkin. Should the County Attorney and the District Attorney feel that it is imprudent to bring in unbiased counsel rather than to prosecute this matter themselves, then give their consent that the Texas Attorney General be called in to prosecute an offense pursuant to Chapter 39, Texas Penal Code, and/or call for the services of other counsel to prosecute this matter. The undersigned request that the proper authority swears out subpoena for all records, correspondence, and other documents showing all communications and activities conducted by Judge Ron Massengill using county resources with his private law firm in Dallas or, and/or any other outside entity not related to county business, and to determine how many hours of county labor the judge utilized for his own personal business. It is our intent that the investigation determines whether Judge Ron Massengill actually violated one or more provisions of the Texas Penal Code 39.02. If it is found that Judge Massengill violated one or more of these provisions, we, the undersigned qualified voters of Hood County, request the proper court to proceed with the prosecution and removal of said Judge Massengill. And like I said, Judge, I'm sorry. I thought we had a real winner in you. There are 140 signatures on this, and I'll turn this over to Katie.
The next speaker is Steve Biggers.
Good morning, Court. How are you guys? You know, in the events, and I appreciate you reading this, Judge, passion's a, passion's a really two-edged sword here, and passion can be a fine line. And I'm a, I'm an extrovert passionate person, and I apologize for the fact that my anger got to me last time around. I don't apologize or retract any of my statements. My statements were true to the point of where I was going with them. I just apologize for what, what the degree of anger that I said them in, and it embarrassed my faith, and I am sorry for that. So along those lines, you know, I don't want to have this out in open letter form, back and forth, Judge, and I appreciate you reading these things, and I was going to read them, too. I brought them up, and I have them highlighted. You guys have signed off on your rules of decorum. So it says in there, you know, your, your letter was very clear, and there were not things in that, I mean, the things you stated in that letter, I did not break. I did not do, I didn't call anybody names or anything like that. So your letter's pretty clear, and when you read in E in the rules of decorum, it says the Commissioners' Court, the body of the Commissioners' Court. The Commissioners' Court does this, the Commissioners' Court does this. And it says, you are the presiding officer, Judge, yes, but you are one-fifth of the five people up there. Now, in your open letter, my court, I, this kind of stuff, and you do that downtown. God bless you for doing that downtown. That's part of your responsibilities. But here, you're one of five, and I didn't get the opportunity to speak to the very thing that just happened. We're going to start governing by petition. This is an antique. This petition's an antique. The petition against Eagle is an antique. It really is. And this is where I was going with that. The things I said, Commissioner Cotton, you got hired four years ago, you got fired this time. Judge, I don't know what's going to happen. You're going to get hired, rehired, or you're going to get fired. But here's the truth. In 30 days, I'm going to say my oath, and I'm going to be the highest elected Republican official in this county for the party. And whether you and I have to work together, this oil and water is going to have to stop, and we're going to have to get along. So you violated, in my mind, and in many, many other people's minds, you violated the civil rights that I have to bring up the points about these antics of petitions, and I didn't get a chance to say that. And then when I'm out in the hall, pulling it up on the livestream and watching it, and then finding the loser to Commissioner Eagle in that precinct, berate Commissioner Eagle. He berated him, attacked, said all these horrible things, and berated the audience, and I'm thinking, good, I'm going to have somebody else out here in the timeout box. But I didn't. You let that go. So where's the, where is the presiding officer in this realm? You want to read these rules? Well, these rules were violently broken by another person in the court that day, and no repercussions whatsoever. So I regret the fact that it happened. We do need to move on with the county and do that business. I expect to take my oath in 30 days and hold very true to my oath, and whether I work with you for the next six months or six and a, or four and a half years, that we have to make a decision here. So please understand, I regret it happened. I do not regret anything I said. I regret the anger that it was said, because we have to come to conclusion with all this. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nanette Samuelson.
Good morning. This is just really short and sweet. I just wanted to call to your attention, it's probably just an oversight, but, you know, a year or so ago, you began adding the links to the agenda items so that the public could research and look for things that are going to be presented in Commissioners' Court. Well, something has changed, and now those links go to Office 360, and we don't have access. So you have to have a login to be able to get to that. So I hope that that can be corrected so that all the information that the public would like to review prior to Commissioners' Court can be available to the public. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the comments at large. So our next item of business is the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next, Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge.
How are you doing, sir?
Good. Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners.
I guess we need to convene into a public hearing, don't we, sir?
Yes.
All right, at this time, at 9:25, we're convening into a public hearing. Mr. Head, the floor is yours.
We have a public hearing to discuss Stewart Ranch. It's in Precinct 3. This property is located at 6525 Cleburne Highway in Granbury. The gross site area for this concept plan is 207.063 acres of the W. Smith Survey Abstract 522, the J. Tandy Survey Abstract Number 799, the J. Brooks Survey Abstract 846, and it proposes to create 58 single-family residential lots. This proposed concept plan is located in the rural district in Precinct 3 and proposes to be served by well and on-site sewage facilities. The proposed concept plan proposes to construct approximately 7,116 feet of private six-inch concrete streets. There will need to be an access permit obtained from TextDOT for the entrance off of Cleburne Highway. There are no variances at this time associated with the proposed concept plan. However, the concept plan is proposing to have the proposed lots served by individual-owned water wells. The proposed lots meet the minimum size requirements to support the being served by a water well, but over half of the gross site area falls within AMUD's certificate of convenience and necessity, or otherwise known as a CCN. And there's an abuffer that extends from that CCN by statute. There's also an A-MUD water line that crosses the entire length of the property outside of the CCN to the middle of the property southeasterly. A CCN grants the CCN holder, which is AMUD, the exclusive right to provide retail water or retail sewer to an identified geographic area, according to Chapter 13 of the Texas Water Code. It requires the CCN holder to provide continuous and adequate service to the area within its CCN boundary. Comment was made during the review requiring, concerning a CCN and wanted a letter from A-MUD stating they were okay with the project being served by wells, and at this time, they were still waiting on that letter from A-MUD. The response we got back that they were still waiting on that letter, but they had spoke with the upper trend and the lots met the requirements for well permits. They do meet the requirements, but that is not the concern or the issue with the county. The county's concern is not to intentionally break or circumvent Chapter 13 of the Texas Water Code. The developer proposes to start on the TextDOT permit once the concept plan is approved. The county has never been in the position where the developer could tell TextDOT, you need to approve the access permit because the county has approved the concept plan. In this situation, staff can only recommend the court either deny the concept plan or conditionally approve the concept plan pending approval from A-MUD and TextDOT.
Are you recommending that we approve the concept plan?
I can only recommend conditionally approving or denying, which is really...
Conditional approval would be based on, you know, whether or not TextDOT, you know, the proper documentation and everything's done with TextDOT and, you know, A-MUD either, you know, doing the, you know, service under the CCN or a letter saying no, sir.
That's all, that's all development can recommend.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear, well, let's step out of the public hearing now and go back into Commissioners' Court here at 9:30. So at 9:30, do I hear a motion?
I move that we conditionally approve the concept plan contingent upon TextDOT approving the access permit and approval letter from A-MUD stating that A-MUD is willing to allow these lots to be served by individual water wells inside the A-MUD CCN, according to Section 1, Section 63, 6.3b, and Section 13 of the Texas Water Code.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to conditionally approve the concept plan in accordance with his motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Head. Financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Today, your expenditures are $2,295.82. You've all been given advance paperwork regarding these invoices. We have reviewed it and recommend payment. You've also been given a spreadsheet of payments over $10,000. Are there any questions regarding any expenditures for this court?
One, the, the first on the expenditures over $10,000, $1.523 million, that was to pay off a bond, correct?
To fund my retirement.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the payments in the amount of $2,2795.82.
I'll second. A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve payments of the bills, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. What else you have, Ms. Becky?
I have the 2022 review of the Justice of the Peace Precinct 1 financial records. You've all received copies of that, and we ask that you receive that, and we'll move on to the next one.
You reckon, do we have to approve that except you accept it?
You accept that report.
Okay.
Make a motion we accept.
Second. A motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle to accept the 2022 review of the Justice of the Peace Precinct 1, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further comment or question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
We ask that you accept the 2022 review of the Justice of the Peace Precinct 2 financial records again.
I make the motion we accept.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the 2022 review of Justice of the Peace Precinct 2 financial records, second by...
I'll second.
Commissioner Andrews.
Okay.
Any further comment, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
The last item I have is the 2021, and that is last year's fiscal year, the annual review by Kennamere, Masters, and Lunsford. And I believe Mr. Whitlow is going to zoom in and talk on this subject.
Okay.
Or at least I hope he is.
Okay. KML.
Do you want to come back to this, try to hold them and go on to miscellaneous?
Yeah, we'll go on to miscellaneous and come back. Okay. While y'all try to get up. Okay, we'll hold that place and go on to miscellaneous. All right, under miscellaneous, item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the sheriff's request to apply for bulletproof vest partnership grant for year 2022, which reimburses up to 50% of the cost of the approved ballistic vest. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, it's that time again to put in the application for the bulletproof vest partnership. The grant application time is open until Monday, June 27, and I've already started that, but I haven't finished it until I get the approval from you guys. So this grant has been going on since after 9/11, I believe is when it started. So their deal is, once it's bought by the court, then I send in the paperwork and they reimburse up to 50%. So I ask that you approve that so I can get that grant submitted. This will be for next year's stuff, so it'll probably be around September before they approve it.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Do I hear appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion that we approve the sheriff's request to apply for the bulletproof vest partnership grant for 2022.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the sheriff's request to apply for the bulletproof vest partnership grant, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item number two, that's you again, isn't it, Sheriff? I'll give you a little time here. We have one speaker on this topic also. I'll let you go ahead and start, Sheriff, and then, Mr. Murns, you filed a motion to speak. So go ahead, Sheriff.
So this year, we finally got everybody measured up, and we had 34 people that needed replacement vests. Two constables, two fire marshal, one DA investigator, and then the rest through the sheriff's office, through patrol investigations. What I gave you was the GT is the authorized distributor with the appropriate buyboard contract, 603-20. And so we're getting 16 of the SX Level 3A vests. Those are pretty much standard. The 18 vests, the next one down, the hardwire, that's some new technology that came out. I guess the military's had it for a while. They're real light, real thin, but they're really good vests. So we had 18 people request to get those. So those are a little bit more expensive, but for those guys out there on the street, that's definitely well worth it. So the grand total is $41,118.66. Also, with what's in the grant right now, we have $6,750 for 2021. So that's not 50% of what we've got that I'm requesting right now, but that's a little bit of a dent into it. So that's the remainder that's in the grant as of right now. So the previous number one, then that's to ask for it to be opened up and more put in there for next year, but for right now, we've got $6,750 left in there that I can work from. So at this time, I'm requesting $41,118.66 for these 34 replacement vests.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Robert, is it Murns?
Murns.
Would you like to come up here and speak, please?
Judge, members of court and members of the public, I would like to take a moment to support the sheriff's request on this. I think it's highly important that all of us recognize the law enforcement community, their requests, their legitimate needs and so forth. And I certainly think the $41,000 that is requested here falls well in lines of what this county can provide to protect our law enforcement officers and so forth. We ask them to be out on the front lines of protecting our constitutional rights and so forth. Sheriff Deeds has stuck, you know, his neck out many times to, you know, support the Constitution. I think this is the least that we can do. So I strongly, you know, appreciate and would support the Commissioner's Court approving this request. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Do I hear appropriate motion?
Judge, could I ask kind of a probably dumb question? Is the bulletproof vest we're talking about in one the same as a ballistic vest in two? Are those two different?
No, they're all ballistic vests worn under their shirts or under a cover.
So it's all the same?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question or comments? Yes.
I was just wondering what Fund... Oh, yes. Glad you brought that up. So I was going to request Fund 55, and like I said, when we get these invoiced, then when we pay that bill, then I'll submit everything into the website, and hopefully they will give us that $6,700 back.
Okay. Okay, so from Fund 55, is Ms. Kidd here or is she back working on there? Sure. Okay. Did you discuss that with her?
I didn't get a chance to discuss that with her, so I'll put her on the spot right now, I guess.
All right, right now on the Fund 55 to pay for these ballistic vests, Ms. Kidd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comment? If not, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the order for 34 replacement ballistic vests for officers under state contract from GD Distributors at a cost of $41,118.66, as stated in the bid.
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the order for the 34 replacement ballistic vests for officers, the sheriffs, at the cost of $41,118.66, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action for additional funding to repair or replace failing air conditioning and heating units in the county building. Mr. Jay Riley.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is what we've done actually four times in the past. What we've been doing, we've been replacing as needed. To date, on the replaced as needed, the total spend was $396,841.17 for 34 units that we replaced in the county. I currently have about, right at 140 to 141 units in the county. So what I'm asking for is another bucket of money of $75,000 to purchase as needed, only to replace or repair units that are rather expensive. So what we've done in the past is following purchasing guidelines, is one fails and it can't be repaired, and it saves us money to replace them. I've still got, and I don't have that number, but I've still got quite a few R-22 units out there, as those are, I can't even buy R-22 anymore, so I'm having to replace those. But right now, we're in good shape today. I may have one that I've got to replace at the Indian Care Clinic in the next month or so. But other than that, we're in pretty good shape, so we'll just spend as needed.
How much are you asking for?
Seventy-five.
Okay.
Thousand.
You ought to zip Fund 55 to Ms. Kidd?
Yes.
Okay. You have the money? We need AC here. We would have some hostile people.
Yes, we...
It's only 104 yesterday.
Jay has done wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
I think he has too. Thank you. Okay, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the, from Fund 55, the $75,000 to minus Jay Riley to, you know, maintain the air conditioner systems as needed.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to pay $75,000 from Fund 55 to repair or replace failing HVAC units for the maintenance department as needed, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Chief Deputy Steve Smith, consider and take appropriate action to move a vacated investigator-sergeant position, $62,262, to an investigator position not to exceed Step 6, investigator, $57,877, effective Tuesday, May 10, 2022.
Judge, Commissioners, we promoted our sergeant-investigator to the open patrol lieutenant position that was vacated by Jesse Davis, and I am not planning on refilling that sergeant's position. We're just going to leave it as an investigator, not a sergeant-investigator. So that's all we're trying to do.
Ms. Kidd, we got the money?
We had that discussion and it's all good.
It's all good? You said a lot of transfer, you know? It's going to be hard to replace Jesse Davis, isn't it?
We've got it done. Hopefully, we've got the right one in there.
Okay. All right. Okay, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the action to move the vacated investigator-sergeant position from $62,262 to an investigator position not to exceed Step 6, investigator at $57,877, effective Tuesday, May 10, 2022.
Second.
A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to move the vacated investigator-sergeant position to an investigator position not to exceed $57,877, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Chief. Okay, now, yeah. Ms. Kidd, do you have yours queued up?
I hope so.
Drew?
It was a mic on end up to you all.
Okay, this is the 2021 Annual Financial Review by Kennamere, Masters, and Lunsford. Ready.
I'll take them. [inaudible]
Couple of minutes. Yeah. We'll do it.
Okay, we're hoping you call me every summer. I'll put you on speakerphone. But in the meantime, are there any questions? I sent this audit report last week, I believe. Are there any questions? Anybody have any questions? It was a large, massive audit. No questions?
I hope not.
Were you happy with it?
Yes, no exceptions, no problems, no issues.
Right.
Everything looked good. So if you want, we can accept the report and hopefully he will call.
If there's no exceptions, no errors, no admissions, no corrections?
Well, that's what he told me on the phone. Well, he said it was a good audit.
So I have a comment.
I just want to clarify. I looked at the, of course, you know how I'm about fund balance, right?
Oh, yes.
And it appears that our opening fund balance was 26...
Hello? Hi, Wade, hang on, I'm going to put you on speakerphone, but Commissioner, he's got a question, so I'm going to go ahead and put you on speakerphone in case you can answer this and help him. Hold on. You there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is Wade Whitlow of Kennamere, Masters, and Lunsford. I recognize his voice. He's not some random person that I hired to do this. Go ahead, Commissioner Eagle.
So if I'm reading this correctly, our fund balance, beginning fund balance was 26 million, 062777, our ending fund balance, 29699748. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and so do you have an explanation as to why our fund balance went up almost $4 million, $3.5 million?
Well, as far as the reason for it going up, you know, the county has good fortune with the amount of sales tax collections that y'all have, and the county adheres to the budget that is set, which also assists in keeping expenditures below the final budgeted amounts. I mean, I would think that that is the overall indicator related to that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm happy that it went up, not down.
Yeah, and I would say that if we look at just the general fund, the amount of unassigned fund balance as it relates to the current year total general fund expenditures was right around 41%. So... continuing to go up. Having this reserve here, typically, we talk about this from an emergency standpoint, but now we're getting some more real-world indicators of why having a reserve like this is necessary to be able to continue to function as a government and to provide the goods and services to your citizens. So I would say from a financial indicator standpoint that that is, the county's in a good position as of September 30th.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for that explanation, too. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Wade, I told him it was an awesome audit, and I have no issues.
Well, one thing I will add, everything did go well. So being in year two, we had, from our audit approach, we had significant improvements in being able to conduct our audit, and a lot of credit goes to Becky and everyone else in the county, the treasurer's office, purchasing, everyone that we directly deal with from the finance side. Year two was much smoother than year one, and that's expected. You know, county employees are figuring out what we need in our processes, as well as the other way. We're figuring out how to get the information we need and interpret that information to perform the services we're providing. We did have one additional audit requirement this year as it relates to a federal single audit. So this is a compliance audit that we did not have last year, and it's directly related to the CARES money that was received. The county exceeded the threshold that required us to perform a compliance audit on major federal programs. So the program that we tested this year was the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Now, we didn't, that program tested, we didn't have any issues testing that program, so everything came back clean on that front. We issued an unmodified opinion over compliance on that program. So that was a clean opinion that we're receiving. That's also included in this report, in the back of the report. It's under the federal awards section of the report. So we anticipate having this requirement in the upcoming year with the ARPA money that was received. I know I've had discussions with each of y'all and Becky extensively about the upcoming program or for the upcoming audit year, so we anticipate that the county's going to meet this requirement to conduct this audit once again.
Okay.
All right, Wade, we appreciate you. Is there any other comments you'd like to add before I let you get back to real business?
I just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to do this remotely. I got married about 10 days ago, and if I was to leave the house right before our wedding, I don't know if she would have walked down the house, so I just appreciate y'all allowing me to do this.
All right, well, thank you, Wade.
All right, thank y'all.
Okay.
So for, the only thing I would like to add is we get, in the past, we had numerous open records regarding the CARES money. It has been completely audited. There are no issues. Just want to make sure that's clear, because we follow the guidelines set forth by our outside auditors, and we adhere to those. And we've been compliant with every open record and any question anybody has, and will continue to be, whatever money there is that there's questions on, whether it's the ARPA money, any account you want to talk about, we will gladly be very transparent and give you all the information we can. Thank you, and ask that you accept this report, and then we can go home.
Okay.
Or go to lunch.
Do I hear appropriate motion? Any questions first? Good job, Becky, very good job.
Thank you.
All right, do I hear appropriate motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we accept the 2021 Annual Financial Review of Kinder, Masters, and Lunsford LLC, as stated.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the 2021 review by our outside auditors, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you all for coming. Very good. So that's almost a land speed record, it's five minutes to 10. Thank you.